Last we have on board at the moment is Norma Chitbonny. Welcome, Norma. Before we get started tonight, I know we're running a couple of minutes late and I apologize. I just wanted to talk to my board members for 30 seconds and just tell you that after my, after our last meeting on March 19th, I very sadly lost my mother on the 23rd of May. And I just wanted to publicly thank all of you for the very quick and outpouring of support that I got. You know, obviously occasionally our opinions differ on this board, but we always come to the same conclusion at the end. And I just wanted to let you know how refreshing it was to know that you guys are all solid friends on top of that and aside from that. So I just want to publicly thank all of you and I very much appreciate.
Hello, buddy.
Thanks.
Yeah, we're behind you. And on a better note, real quick, the other quote unquote young guy on the board got very old since the last time we met. I do believe some congratulations is in order for one of the members who recently became a grandfather.
Hello, grandpa.
Yeah, Pat Mulville, really much congratulations.
Thank you very much. Everybody's happy and healthy. That twins Delilah and Roman.
Right.
Yeah, it was last week, last week, so.
Wow, that's great news. Yeah, so anyways, Mr. Barney, I apologize for holding you up and I apologize for my tardiness. This technology is upcoming, new to everybody. This is Zoom meeting and everything else, but anyways, we welcome you.
Thank you. I just want to say.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I was gonna introduce yourself and the gentleman to your right, if you could, just for starters.
I will. So I'm Norma Chitbonny. And first, before I say anything else, Tom, sorry for your loss.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much.
I'm here with my contractor, George Neder.
Hello.
Welcome, George.
Hi, Norma.
Hi.
Okay. Thanks for joining us. So let me, let me start real quick. So this is Tuesday, July 7th. Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. First case up is case number 20-07784 in the Plonset Street. Looking for an addition. Let me just read it real quick. And I do have, I do have the Ramonda gave me the notices that were in the newspaper. I think everybody got one or I hope they did, but I'll read it to you in a moment if we don't. But we have notices here by giving the zoning board of appeals down and all, all the public hearing on tonight, July 7th at 7:15 at the request of Norma Chitbonny with respect to property located at 784 Plonset Street in a S1 single residence district. The meeting will be conducted digitally using GoToMeeting participation, blah, blah, blah. This application requests a special permit under section 5.4.4 zoning by law to allow the extension of the existing non-conforming structure, which will be greater than 25% of the existing non-conforming structure, to permit the construction of a one-story in-law addition in accordance with plans submitted. This application also requires a variance under general laws necessary of Massachusetts to allow the building height of the proposed addition of 16.4 feet within 9.4 feet of the side setback rather than the required 10-feet limitation of the building height with 15, within 15 feet of the side setback or any relief deemed necessary pursuant to section 4.1.2, court code number five. Plans are on file with the ZBA and he can be viewed during Norma's business hours, Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4. Okay, so that's more of a technicality than anything else. So Norma, if you want to, just starting into, uh, let me just, I do have affidavits, I believe. Let me just read those into the record. We do have affidavits from Norma Chitbonny on June 18th and June 25th and a copy of the Norwood Record. Okay, can I do, um, yeah, so we're good with that. So Norma, if you want to, if you want to just introduce yourself one more time, if you don't mind, and then say your business, that'd be fantastic.
Sure. I'm Norma Chitbonny from 784 Plonset Street. What I'd like to do is I'm hoping to put on an addition, an in-law suite for my sister. He currently lives in New Mexico and she's getting older and needs better healthcare. Healthcare out in that area is not very good. So she wants to, she's been trying for about two years to move back to Norwood because we've lived here all our lives. But as you know, it's pretty expensive. She owns a beautiful home there. But something like that would be three times as much here. So she's not able to buy or rent because rent's expensive. So because I have a fair amount of land in the back, I felt I needed to help her. And she wants to be back in Norwood and with the rest of the family. My, my mom passed away a year ago, so we're trying to all be together again. So I'm hoping we're able to do this.
Okay. And I'll entertain some questions from the boards in a moment. The only thing I just wanted to add, I mean, literally, the, the 9.4-foot side setback, that's only from a set of stairs? Is that correct?
Yes. Isn't that?
Okay.
Not from the stairs or the pantry?
Might be from the pantry.
Oh, just a minute.
It was existing, Tom.
Okay.
We just stay with the same line of the way it's, the house is going.
It was there when I bought it.
Okay, so that, okay, so that isn't, okay, no problem. All right, so I'll entertain questions from the board. Pat, if you want to go first, that'd be great.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Norma, good to see you and your contractor as well. What I have to say is more of a commentary, not so much a critique or substantive question on your application. It's a commentary on in-laws as a whole. This board, since I've sat on it, has always been receptive to in-law dwellings and units for moms or dads, or in this case, a sister. So one of the things that I remember when I started was the biggest concern, not necessarily obviously this application, but I couldn't tell you which one it was, it was so many years ago, is that what happens when sister goes on to the glorious gates of heaven, hopefully in a long time from now. And then you have a single family with another unit in there, in a single family zone. And everybody will look at each other and say, oh, you know, I've got the unit, I can rent it out. Did Matt Walsh tell you about the process after the fact? I'm assuming that you've spoken with the building inspector and that's why you're here as far as what happens when the unit is no longer needed for a familial relationship?
Well, first off, no, I haven't, but I'm gonna let George address that. But I do have five other sisters and 12 nieces and nephews. So I'm sure someone will at some point end up buying it or living there. So, but I'll let, I'll let you address that.
I talked to Matt. I know Matt. I go back with Mark, so I've been dating myself a little bit. Mark's just retired. Yeah, we understand that. I just didn't want on a recent addition, I think it was on 354 Railroad Ave. I don't know if it's the Jean Banko's house.
That the Henrys or?
Jean Banko.
Jean Banko, okay, yep.
Julianne. And we didn't need a special permit because we met the setbacks. So it was an addition for her parents too. So she understands that she can't turn it into rental afterwards. But Norma's goal is for a sister and my kids to have a large family. So I think her use for this will be family for years to come.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to stress, George is, it's George, right?
Yes, yes, okay.
So that's what I wanted to stress, just for the people that are watching in town tonight that think they, you know, I'll just put a unit on the back and have my sister or cousin or whatever live there. When that time comes, Norma, and again, this is like I said, more of a commentary, not, not so much geared towards you. The rules are, and I believe it's regulations that are in the town bylaws or the building code, that that use has to stay within a familial relationship to, Norma, it's Chitbonny and I've always called you Chitbonny. Is that right?
That's right. That's okay.
I'm sorry. So it has to stay within the family. You cannot use that as an income-producing piece of property to a non-familial person. So that's all, when, when that, when that moment in time comes, whenever it may be, and I hope it's years in the future.
Yeah, me too. So I just also want to add, so I'm a single woman and I live by myself, so I would not be comfortable renting it to someone I didn't know or having anyone live there that I didn't know, just for what that's worth.
No, again, like I said, I'll close with this. I just didn't, I didn't want any miscommunication that the people out there in Norwood are thinking that we're just gonna let somebody in a single-family zone, an in-law on for the right purposes upfront, but then when the purpose is no longer needed, they can start using it as rental income, kind of like a backdoor way to becoming a two-family. And that's not, that's simply not allowed in Norwood, so.
Really understood.
Thank you, Norma and George.
Thank you.
All right, real quick, it looks like we might have just lost Murph. Murph, are you still right back? Murph's back?
I just turned my camera off.
Oh, all right, buddy. Thank you. So Phil, Mr. Riley, if you get something, please.
Uh, yes. Those trees that are on the left side of your property, as you face it in the street, how tall are they?
Yeah, the ones that block the neighbors, what, 17, 18 feet?
Oh, they're pretty high.
Yeah, at least 17 or 18 feet. You can't see the neighbor from the side.
So as a result of that, the next-door neighbor would probably not even see much of the addition that you're proposing to put on. Would that be correct?
That would be correct.
Yep.
They don't even see the house now.
And I need to ask a question that our former member, Barbara Kinta, asked at every meeting. And that is, have you had enough opportunity to talk to any of the neighbors as to whether or not anyone has any objection to your request?
So the neighbor where the trees are, she's currently in Florida. The neighbor to the other side I have talked about, and they think it's a great idea. So that's both the only two I've really talked to.
That's all I have for the moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, great, thank you. Mr. Murphy, if you have something?
One question I had, Ms. Chitbonny, or maybe the contracts can answer it. What was the, why is the structure non-conforming right now?
Well, it's not conforming because it's not the, it doesn't meet the 15-foot setback.
So that's, so it's just that, it's just on the 15-foot setback? There's no other non-conformance?
That's it. The lot's big enough, everything's there. And we just want to carry the family flying over, keep the house on the same thing and just keep it going.
So right now, right now, are you at, is it 10.7 now? Is that what it is? Or what is it right now?
Correct.
And you're gonna drop it?
One part hits 9.4 as, as the chairman indicated.
All right.
It's like a small, like closet that sticks out for some reason when they built it.
Yeah. It's about seven inches and that's the existing conformity, but anyways. Anything else, Mr. Murphy?
Nothing else, Mr. Chair.
All right, great. Mr. Reese, you have anything?
I really don't. I mean, I know Norma, I know all the perpers. It's a big, wonderful family and I know they'll do the right thing.
Thanks, Paul.
Norma, are you related to Joe Perper?
I am.
Oh, my God. I didn't know that.
Not gonna help her or her?
You didn't need any help, Tom, but Joe's a good friend.
All right. Real quick, Norma, the only thing I could suggest to basically expand a little bit on what Pat Mulville was saying. If we want, and I'm not gonna make a suggestion to the board, whoever wants to make a motion, if we want, we could always add a condition that an in-law affidavit is recorded at the registry if we want. If we don't, then we can just move on. But is anybody, before we do that, I gotta entertain, if anybody's on, on the Zoom here, which is to speak on this matter from the audience? Okay, I'll assume not. Do I have the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close?
Motion to close by Mr. Mulville, seconded by?
I'll second that.
By Mr. Murphy. All those in favor of closing?
Yes.
Might do a roll call on that?
Sure. Mr. Murphy, you're in favor of closing?
Yes.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Mulville?
Yes.
And Mr. Riley?
Yes.
As is the chair. So we'll go with five, nothing. Thank you, Murph. And discussion of the board. Anybody have any discussion further or do we want to move forward?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the application, but I think she does have to file the affidavit at the registry as a normal course of action through the building department. Is that right, George?
That's correct. That's correct. I already have the affidavit. We just need to file it. We got approved.
I have the form already.
Okay, so just as a formality, we'll make the motion to approve with the stipulation that the the in-law affidavit is recorded at the registry. We'll assume you're gonna take care of that, but we'll also order it officially as well. So I do have a motion, motion to approve by Mr. Mulville, seconded by Mr. Murphy. So we'll move forward. Any, all those in favor of approving the motion?
Question, Mr. Chairman. There are two different items of relief. I think maybe we should handle them separately.
Yeah, I agree.
And a variance.
All right, let's do, let's do, do we have to do a variance or can we just do a special permit?
I think you do the variance as well.
You think you do?
Yeah.
All right, as always, I'll go, I'll go along with what you say. All right, so let's do the special permit. You want to just do the variance or you want to do them both?
I think you should do them both.
Okay, let's do it separately. Let's, this first vote is in favor of the special permit. Okay, so I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Murphy, how do you vote on the special permit? Aye. Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Mulville?
Aye.
And Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Okay, as well as the chair. So that's a five for nothing vote in favor of the special permit. I will entertain a motion in regards to the variance that was also asked for.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Mulville and seconded by Mr. Murphy in regards to the variance request. So a quick roll call vote. I'll start with Mr. Murphy again. Aye. Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Mulville?
Aye.
And Mr. Riley?
I will also vote aye. Just a short explanation. As I'm sure all of you know, I'm the stickler on variances. There could be some issue as to how justified it is technically under the bylaw and under the statute. But the reason I asked the question about the trees on the side is that I think it's important in this particular case that you cannot see the new addition from the next-door neighbor. So there's really not much harm going on here. And as a result of that, I'd be prepared to make an exception to my usual variance concerns and vote aye as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. And as always, Phil, thank you for the explanation. We all need a lesson almost on a bi-weekly basis. So we're very glad you're.
The money goes to the digital part of it, so trade your.
All right, so I'll go along with that as well. All right, so we'll go, we'll go with a five, nothing vote in favor of the variance as well. So you pass no problem with the stipulation of the affidavit for the in-law recording at the registry and we wish you well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck. Very well.
Very.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Now, do we, I thought I had a lawyer on here earlier. I didn't know who he was, though.
But you got two of them, Bert and me.
No, 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 I know that. I'm not talking. No, that's fine. Somebody running.
I'll take a call and get rid of it. You get more lawyers than you need.
I know. Yeah, I'm all right with it. You can never have enough representation. Do, do I have somebody?
Tom, I did see Brian Almeida here when, before you came in. I don't know if that's what you're talking about.
He's still, he's still connected. Does have his mic on or is, turn them off?
How you doing, Mr. Chairman? My name is Max Young. I work for MS Walker. The, our legal counsel is Dennis McKenna, who is on this call, who will speak, will be speaking for MS Walker specifically.
Okay, before we, we're not gonna actually, we're not gonna open this hearing. I have a request here from Mr. Federico's attorney. I'm requesting a continuance of tonight's hearing on behalf of Mr. Federico, manager of UAV LLC, to a date to be determined. Your understanding is greatly appreciated in this manner. So we're gonna continue this hearing, right? And we're gonna rather postpone this hearing. And the two dates I've been, I'm gonna off, you know what? I'm gonna postpone it till September 15th. You all right with that, Mr. Almeida?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna postpone this hearing at the request of the applicant. And we'll take a roll call vote on that as well. But we're gonna postpone this hearing until September 15th. So a quick, why don't I get a motion to postpone it if that's right with somebody?
Don't move.
Just a second. Okay, so all right, so Mr. Mulville and Mr. Murphy, seconding it. So appreciate that. For a postponement till September 15th regarding hearing case number 2008. Make sure I said that right. Yes, so 2008 is continued to September 15th. Mr. Murphy, how do you plead in that one?
I, I, yeah, I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Reese?
Yep.
Mr. Mulville?
Yes.
And Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a five, nothing vote as well for me. We're gonna go with the time on September 15th at nine, it's nine, 7:15. 7:15, September 15th is the new hearing date. All right, Mr. Almeida?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and gentlemen of the board. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
If you were gonna make it nine o'clock, I was gonna vote against it.
I was gonna do, I was gonna do, but you notice how quickly I caught myself. So anyways. So before we close, great seeing everybody again. And I, again, I really appreciated the support with my loss. That was, it really meant a lot that each of you reached out to me personally and quickly too. That was the thing that really, really meant a lot to me. That really stood out. I was pleasantly surprised at that. Not surprised, but pleasantly surprised that that happened. So you guys are all good people, good friends of mine. So thank you.
Well, it's great, it's great seeing you guys too. We don't see each other, now we don't see each other in person anymore.
Exactly. Good to see you all. And always thanks for filling in. But Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring something to the attention of the board, two fronts. We had an application in about a month and a half ago, two months ago. I can't remember. Time seems to be flying with this, yes, that we're going through with COVID. But the condos that were trying to be rented up by Guarinos, everybody familiar with that? Yeah, someone came forward and portrayed or testified that they don't think that they could sell them. Well, I just want to, you know, for FYI, for everybody's information, four units were sold in one day by the broker last Friday or last Thursday at the complex. And now all of it, they lose them, all of it are the most affordable ones, but four in one day. So there's some pent-up demand and let that be a lesson that this board sees that if you price it right, I think there's a great alternative to, not to besmirch apartments, but I think the town has had enough of them that, you know, condos are the way to go, then it's ownership and all the vested interests of the town. Again, not to say that they don't have it as renters, but it's just something I think the town has spoken, you know, loudly on they don't want any more of those.
And I think also that, we also complimented that the builder produces quality products. So I'd like to congratulate the people who purchased them.
Secondly, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Riley has been aware of this for many years, that he's been on the board. Normally, and these are not normal times, but normally the chairmanship goes for one year and then we reorganized the following year. I believe it's around April or May. These are not normal times and notwithstanding anybody's objection, never mind the actual chairman himself, but I'd like to renominate Mr. Brady for another full year as chairman unless somebody else would like to take the gall.
I'll second that, Mr. Mulville. So there's my answer to that.
Well, no problem on that. I apologize that I didn't get a chance to talk to everybody individually about that. I accept responsibility that I probably should have addressed this back in April or May, especially with what we got going on here. But you know what? I do see a phenomenal cohesiveness with the board and I'm trying my best and I would absolutely be thoroughly unsuccessful if it wasn't for the assistance and guidance and help of each and every one of you. So that's gonna continue. So be forewarned if you do, if you do want to fulfill this quest of yours. But no, I mean, I'd be happy to. I mean, this is, it's different times, like you said. This thing, it's not difficult. It's just aggravating and only because it's abnormal. And the only reason it's abnormal is because it's not normal. All right, so hopefully we can get rid of this thing and, you know, not have to deal with it much longer. I mean, unfortunately, I haven't got any confirmation in quite some time, but you know, with any luck, we're back inside the building with everybody and, you know, back seeing each other with, you know, hopefully by the end of the year, I'm hoping. So hopefully the numbers continue to trend downward as they have been, at least in the state of Massachusetts and everybody has good health and happiness and and is careful, you know what I mean, and wise and smart and do the right thing. You know, I mean, as much of a pain in the neck the frigging masks are, pardon my language, but, you know, you gotta wear them, especially when you're in the presence or potentially in the presence of a vulnerable individual, whether it be elderly or somebody with a compromised immune system. I'm not gonna sit here and lecture. But I do hope everybody does the right thing and continues to do the right thing and thinks of other people besides themselves. So.
All right, we need a vote? I think we need a vote, right?
You have a motion and a second on the floor. Anyone?
Question?
Okay, so is there any?
Finally, as long as I don't have to do it, I'm perfectly happy.
You can do this, Riley, that's fine.
I was waiting for you to chime in, Phil, when Brady said it's very frustrating as chairman.
And if anybody knows, Phil, they know that's a ringing endorsement. So thank you. But, and you know what? It hasn't been frustrating because let me publicly also comment on the fact that Ramonda Morgan, our administrative assistant, I couldn't do, I couldn't do a thing without her. A hundred percent. Thank you very much. And if Tony Mizuko or anybody else from the town is chiming in here, I would like to highly recommend her for a raise. Or whatever, for whatever it's worth, but in all seriousness, and I do mean that.
Speak louder, Tom. Speak louder.
But no, I think I speak for everybody when I say thank you very much for all the, because I don't think it goes as recognized as it should and as often. So thank you very much. So.
I gotta make a comment here. I think I should get a little credit for this because I hired her.
Yep.
All right, all right.
Listen, I was about to pile on poor Ramonda, but I remember the phone call. Becky, Phil Riley here. How are you? Listen, the administrator's job is pretty much locked and loaded with this young girl, Ramonda Morgan. Didn't know who she was from a can of paint, but Phil just said, look at her resume. She just stood out amongst the rest and, you know. Why doesn't she show her face on the camera, Mr. Chairman? I think you gotta make that a rule next time.
Well, you know, I'll tell you what, I'll speak for her. I think we've all seen The Wizard of Oz. You know what I mean? We all know The Wizard. She's, she can very welcome, she's very welcome to be the person behind the curtain and continue to do so because she's definitely pulling the strings of these puppets on this, this computer, I'll tell you that.
Who knows? Who knows, Phil? So, Tom, you wanna take a vote on that?
Sure, I'll, I'll enter the, the motion's been entertained. It's a motion made by Mr. Mulville to renominate myself, seconded by Mr. Murphy. I'd be happy to do it and I'm appreciative of everybody's support. So if we want to take a quick roll call, Mr. Murphy, how do you feel on that? Aye. Mr. Mr. Easy?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye, as long as Ramonda won't do it.
All right, and Mr. Mulville?
Aye, aye.
So I'll abstain. So we'll go with a four, nothing vote on that and thank you for the confidence. I appreciate that.
I also want to congratulate Mr. Mulville on that excellent Attorney Riley imitation you just did. That was.
That takes talent.
Believe me. He's a great lawyer.
Why don't we do a motion to, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Seconded by just about everybody. Anyway, so quick, quick roll call mode on, on, to adjourn, just for the record. Mr. Murphy? Aye. Mr. Mulville?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
I was hoping we could talk till midnight, but I'll say aye.
And Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right. All right, lady and gentlemen, uh, the, the meeting is now closed. Uh, everybody be safe, be happy, and, uh, enjoy the good weather, please, and, uh, be safe.